All right, so that we can keep things moving forward as Chris is trying to work through this. Charles, you are our vice chair. You could. You could move us forward for public comments if you would like.
All right, let's move to public comments. And those are public comments, we can move forward to a five minute maximum per person for items not on the agenda.
Not seeing any hands for any public comments for not on the agenda, so. Mr. Vice Chair, we can move on to the consent calendar.
All right, at this point, we're moving on to review the planning commission meeting minutes. Can we get a motion to approve the many meeting minutes as they are?
Commissioner, if you saw, I moved that we approved the planning commission meetings minutes from the April meeting. As they stand.
And can we get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, for meeting minutes, we can do a voice vote, so all in favor?
I say I.
Hi.
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 And.
They pass.
Oppose and it passed. All right. So next, we go on to the public hearings.
Yes, so would you like me to assist you, Mr. Vice Chair on this one?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. So we have first on the agenda this evening, CUP. Twenty-two dash zero 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 one and PUD twenty-two dash zero 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 one. Which is development of a hundred and eleven lot subdivision consisting of fourteen detached, single-family homes, ninety-six townhomes and a twenty-four unit apartment building. So, Mr. Chair, at that point, you can go ahead and call the hearing to order.
I would like to call this hearing to order for the quasi judicial public hearing on CUP twenty-two dash zero 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 one. Um, at this time, I'd like to call for any absentations, any biases, ex parte contact, or any objections to jurisdiction that anyone may have. Hearing none. Um, after our initial staff report, there will be a time for proponents and opponents to testify, and you'll be given five minutes each, so please hold public comments. Uh, within that time, and let's go ahead to the staff report.
Uh, first, Mr. Vice Chair, we have a process that Aiden needs to read the legal announcement into the record.
All right. O R S one nine seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner. Or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in the appeal of this case to the land use board of appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level. Prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at the land use board of appeals. Failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue. Precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on application. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray. So at this point, Mr. Vice Chair, it is time for the staff report. So, Robin, if you could pull up the PowerPoint for me, please. All right. So as we noted when we called this hearing to order, this is for Crestview Green. It is a conditional use, CUP twenty-two dash zero 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 one. And a planned unit development, PUD twenty-two dash zero 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 one. Next slide. So bear with me this evening, I'm going to walk through some slides, I'm going to do it as quickly as possible. I know everyone has read your staff report. Um, but I'm going to try to hit through the highlights and the conditions of approval that staff has identified. So the applicant for this one is Three J Consulting, Westwood Homes, and the property is currently under the ownership of the Kimball and the Thomas families. So as I mentioned earlier, this is a CUP to approve housing in the C two. Uh, and it's a planned unit development for a hundred and eleven lot residential development. It's noted previously fourteen detached, single-family homes, ninety-six townhouses and a twenty-four unit apartment building. Sites located in the very east side of town at forty-eight thirteen and forty-eight twenty-one East Portland Road. Uh, the tax lots are noted in the slide is R three two one six tax lot one thousand and nine hundred. The zoning on these properties, these two properties that are proposed. Are R one, which is our low-density residential, R two, medium-density and C two commercial. We also have two overlays or several overlays. Uh, associated with this one, so we have the airport overlay, which is the airport conical surface, the bypass interchange. And then I forgot to add in, there's a stream corridor overlay as well. Next slide. So these are the criteria that the planning commission will be reviewing tonight, so fifteen two twenty-five, the conditional use. Fifteen two forty, the planned unit development. Fifteen three fifty-six, bypass interchange. Fifteen four oh five lot requirements, fifteen four ten yard setback requirements. Fifteen four fifteen building and site design. Fifteen four twenty landscaping and outdoor areas. And next slide. Fifteen four twenty-five exterior lighting, fifteen four thirty underground utility installation, fifteen four thirty-five signs, fifteen four forty. Off-street parking, bicycle parking and private walkways and fifteen five oh five are public improvement standards. Next slide, please. So this is the location, as I mentioned, it's on the very east side of town, north of East Portland Road, otherwise known as Oregon ninety-nine W. On the very east side of the development area is Northeast Benjamin Road. So the zoning that I mentioned earlier, this gives you the graphic of where the R one is located, the R two and the C two zones. Next slide. This is the preliminary plat that was included in your packet, so on the north are the fourteen lots, which are the larger lots. Uh, the ninety-six townhomes are in the center of the site. Uh, the water quality facility is on the right-hand side of this drawing over by Benjamin Road. And then at the southern portion of this drawing in the. I'll call it regularly a triangle is where the multifamily development would be occurring. And there are two streets proposed, Willa Kinsey and East Jory Street. And both of those streets would connect with Northeast Benjamin Road. Next slide. Um, the significant issues in tonight's presentation, one will be stream corridor. Second one is solar access. Third is the townhouse and the window glazing requirements as it applies to corner lots. There is a twenty-foot wide buffer along the C two district along Benjamin Road, which was conditioned from past land use actions. And then the disconnection of Northeast Benjamin Road from East Portland Road. So we will talk about all of those this evening. Next slide. So past actions, so there was urban growth boundary expansion. Um, and this was back in January of two thousand and seven, there were two actions that were taken, one was by, oh, I'm going to use the acronym NUMAC. Um, and then the second one was an order that was adopted by the city council, two thousand and seven zero 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 one. There were conditions in those decisions. The next land use action was an annexation and the two properties were annexed into the city limits in two thousand and eight. And those orders were two thousand and eight zero zero one four, there was an accompanying ordinance because it had to go to a vote. Uh, given annexation regulations and uh, Newburg's. Standards at that time and order number two thousand and eight zero zero one five, again, and an accompanying ordinance to go to an election. Again, there were conditions of approval in those land use actions for those orders. Next slide. Uh, there was a lot line adjustment, and so we issued a decision on May second regarding that, and that's up at the very northeast corner. Of the site where there was a stream corridor. And so we've issued that decision and that transferred. Uh, some of the property. To the abutting property to the north, which is actually outside of the urban growth boundary and the city limits. Next slide. So conditionally use criteria, so the first one. Deals with location, size and design, so in your staff report, our evaluation is that the proposed development. Uh, is again requesting this conditional use permit to allow the residential in the C two, which is similar to what was done with Crestview. Crossing to the west of this particular site. And we've evaluated the location, size, design, operating characteristics of the proposal. Next slide. The second one is B, which is location, design and site planning. And this development will create a convenient and functional living environment. We all know that Newburgh is continuing to grow and providing that opportunity for housing. C. Is uh, related to provisions of consistency with the code, and most of these will be addressed as part of the planned unit development process. There were a variety of uh, reports that were submitted with this particular application, stormwater reports, transportation studies. And so forth that are all included in your packet, which is always a good reminder to end. The entire staff report and all of the exhibits and attachments into the record. Next slide.
Thousand pages.
Uh, it's a big packet. So there are some criteria uh, as part of the conditional use. And the first one, and I, these are in summary, the full details are in your packet, but is to comply with all the conditions of approval. Uh, re- uh, related to development of the housing within the C two district as. Conditions are proposed in the planned unit development. Secondly, is to carry out that construction and the site development and all the landscaping in accordance with. The plans, drawings, conditions, sketches and other documents. Um, that are contained in your packet this evening. And then the third one here is that the townhouses and the apartment buildings in the C two zone shall adhere to the following phasing timeline. That we've worked with the applicant on, so phase one constructed in two thousand and twenty-three, phase two, two thousand and twenty-four, and phase three. In two thousand and twenty-five, and so in your packet, there is a phase drawing that shows you uh, those different. Aspects and they're moving basically from west to east and phase three is the apartment project. Next slide. Uh, PUD criteria, so this development is proposed by Westwood Homes LLC. Uh, the processing steps that we had to go through. And we've concluded that it is met. And the applicant has made that effort to preserve natural amenities. Create attractive, safe and efficient and stable environment by this particular proposal to allow housing in the C two. Next slide. Phasing, as already mentioned in the conditional use. Uh, there are three proposed phases uh, for this project, phase one, two and three. The applicant recognized the lapse of approval. In this particular process and they fully intend to develop the proposed project per the proposed phasing plan and timeline. Next slide. Re-submital is another provision in our PUD and the applicant in their narrative acknowledged. That and there is a process that that they did not follow through, there's a timeline about when they could resubmit. Uh, density. Is number F in our PUD provisions and staff concluded that the requirements. Were met and they are not exceeding the total density, so the maximum density points they could have was a little over twenty-nine hundred. And their density is proposed a little over fifteen hundred, so they're below the maximum threshold. Next slide. Buildings and permitted uses. Uses allowed, so the single-family homes, the fourteen lots to the north are permitted. The townhouse development is uh, allowed through that conditional use process. There's also a portion of the townhouses that are in the R two and townhouses are permitted use in the R two. Uh, another requirement in our PUD provisions is that they have to use a professional coordinator and a design team. And your packet identifies all of that and they meet those requirements as well. Next slide. Modifications, so there were a couple of modifications that were proposed in this application. So the lot size in the R two and the C two, and so the applicant proposed a minimum lot size of one thousand three hundred and thirty square feet. And they also proposed in the R two and the C two, a nineteen-foot uh, frontage, private street or public street frontage. And then in the C two, there was a requirement for a ten-foot setback between the R two and the C two. Zone, and so staff is recommending that these adjustments be approved. The lot coverage. Uh, each of those will be evaluated, we'll get into a little bit more of that in some following slides. Uh, we can't evaluate at that point that that this juncture, because we do not have the specifics of the design of all of the houses to be able to determine that. Next slide. Height, so we've uh, recommended conditions and those would be verified through the building permit process to make sure all the structures meet. The setback requirements, the commission does have the ability this evening to address the issue about the solar set plan setbacks. So they meet the east-west, the north-south are the ones that are of issue that were identified in your staff report. That there was not a specific modification requested for that, it was more of an exception. And but the authority rests with the planning commission if you want to approve the setbacks that have been identified. L is dedication and improvements and maintenance of public through fares. So there are some conditions on sidewalks, on private streets, there are conditions on CCNRs on private streets and maintenance. There's a requirement for annual reporting and then utility easements in the private streets as well. Next slide. Undergrounding utilities, uh, there's a condition to underground, and so the overhead utilities in this particular project are along Northeast Benjamin Road. There is a requirement for the residential habit can have a ten percent usable outdoor area. So there's condition for that, next one. Site modifications, so stream corridor. So in my staff report, I identified that there is an issue up at the very northeast corner, so there was a lot line adjustment that was reviewed. And we've issued the decision on that, but the prior conditions from prior land use actions identified that there needed to be a fifty-foot. Setback from a delineated wetland. Uh, or the top of bank, whichever is further. And so in your supplemental report material, I identified that we got confirmation from the Department of State Lands about the. Uh, location of that particular wetland. And so the fifty-foot or top of bank then would go from that particular wetland boundary. In the drawings that were submitted, there some tree removal identified that would be in that stream quarter corridor, and there's grading that's been identified, so there are a couple of options. One is that the applicant could modify their plans to not show any grading within the stream corridor, and that would affect parcel fourteen or lot fourteen. And track B, or they could submit a stream corridor application to make modifications within the stream corridor, so we've given some options there. Landscaping, uh, the applicant identified in their narrative that they would comply. Uh, and if they don't have the landscaping installed, the time they're ready for occupancy, there's a provision to a post-financial security of performance bond for that landscape. Next slide. Design standards. Um, so we have proposed conditions to comply with design standards. And we'll get into a little bit more of that as we go through the slides. Next slide, please. Application, so they paid all their fees, they submitted their plans and they provided their measure forty-nine form, which is required in our process. Then on the review and decision criteria. Uh, the analysis and the summary we provided on the slide here is that they can meet most of the criteria, there were the. Uh, kind of the essential issues that I noted earlier in the slide. And a couple of those, one is the twenty-foot wide buffer along the C two commercial. And that fifty-foot stream corridor buffer. And there's another uh, addressing erosion control measures that we'll get into, a part of the public improvements. Next slide. So all of the conditions were listed, so your first staff report went out. Uh, there was a supplemental packet that went out on Monday afternoon. Um, based on the cutoff, and I did make a few adjustments to findings in that supplemental packet based upon information that was submitted. And we updated the conditions of approval as well, so you want to pay attention to your conditions of approval that are in your supplemental packet. Next slide. Design elements. Um, so this one, we. Uh, suggested a condition for some detailed design drawings of the multifamily building, and so. There's a matrix and you have to a certain number of points that you have to meet, they were right at the bottom of that particular threshold. But there was not a lot of design detail on the building itself and the material, so we were looking for a little bit more information. Then building design elements, uh, began a similar type of condition is being suggested on the materials. Next slide. There's a two-part when you go through the scoring numbers. Then permitted uses, and so this is in the bypass interchange overlay area, so in the R one and the R two. A residential is permitted. And in the C two residential is allowed through a conditional use permit process, and so that is conformance with the. The uh, bypass interchange overlay. Next slide. Lots, I'm not going to read all of this to you because you'll get tired of my voice this evening, but we did recommend conditions. Uh, related to the lot size in the R two being down to the one thousand three hundred and thirty, same thing. Uh, should have been the C two, condition on lot frontage, again, I mentioned this earlier, is nineteen feet. Our minimum is twenty, so there are a few lots that would be smaller than the twenty feet. Uh, we would need to double-check. All the lot coverage again as we go through the building process for the R one. And then all of the townhouses in both the R two and the C two. Um, portions of this development. Next slide. Setbacks, a similar situation is that we need to check and confirm all of the setbacks. For the development is it goes through the uh, building permit review process, that would be for all of the lots. The multifamily, it does meet its setback requirements, so this really applies to the detached, single-family and the townhomes. Next slide. Uh, more on the particular setbacks, and so again, all of this is in your detailed staff report that you have, that. Commissioner Capri mentioned the length of it, there is one additional one is about the vision clearance triangles. And so we need uh, a drawing that would show the vision clearance triangles for all the public intersecting streets and the private streets with the public streets. To make sure that it conforms with the development code requirements. Next slide. Uh, some more on setbacks. The wall height, and so in reviewing the plans, there are some walls that are proposed as you go from west to east between these different pieces of it. And there was one wall that was over the six-foot height and there was not a modification requested for that. Uh, so we recommended a condition to change that. And then there is chain link fencing that will go around the perimeter of the stormwater facility, and the city has specific standards. About the gauge of that particular uh, chain link fencing, and so we suggested a condition there. Next slide. Building and site design. Um, again, so confirming and checking that uh, through the building permit processes that. The units are conforming to structure height in the R one and the R two. Um, if there are any accessory buildings that are proposed, that we have provisions in our code for that. So we've recommended a condition there. Uh, there were no building height exemptions requested, um, but we did recommend a condition. Uh, that if that was to occur, they need to comply. And then, um, there was a condition we recommended on providing the floor plans to just to make sure that we're. Meeting the setback and the porch requirements and so forth related to the townhomes. So these townhomes are all new regulations that went into effect, uh, January sixth, actually of two thousand and twenty-two. Next slide. Landscaping. So there's a provision for landscaping for the townhouses, support some private area, square footage requirements. There's again for townhouses, some individual and shared areas, and so there's some. Numeric calculations we need for that. The multifamily development, there's some additional trees that are required between the parking lot and East Jory Street. Uh, to meet our standards, so we recommended a condition there. And uh. There are two additional parking lot shade trees that are identified. Or staff has I've been identified that are needed in the multifamily parking lot as well. Next slide. There's a condition for a street tree on Benjamin Road north of Willa Kinsey. Street. Um, there is a condition. Uh. To coordinate with the applicant, if there's feasibility for any street trees on the private streets. Again, since we don't have the footprint layout of the units, we're not able to assess that. There was a condition that's recommended to make sure that there's a note on the landscape plans that landscaping will have an. Automatic underground irrigation system, by and large, this applies to the multifamily portion of the development. And then another one, we have a provision in our code that they have to continuously maintain the landscaping, so we recommended that. Next slide. Uh, photometric, so this is the lighting plan. And so there are different lights, there are streetlights that have to meet the public works, design and construction standards, and then there's lighting on the private development area. That has lighting standards as well, and so we've. Uh, again, the details of those conditions in the report, but we need some revisions to the photometric plan to make sure that we're meeting the light levels for. Different lights, so so there's low, medium, high lights, which is basically related to the height of the light that's being identified. And making sure that there's shielding and so forth uh, for the lighting, so it does not surpass our point-five-foot candle at the property line requirement. Next slide. Um, signs, signs were not proposed, signs maybe. Uh, the apartments may have a sign identifying the project, it could be that the overall Crestview Green has signings to identify it. But that would be required to go through a separate submittal requirement, uh, which is a type one process. Next slide, please. Parking. Um, based on our analysis of this, there are five additional spaces, they could deal with this in two different ways, they could add five additional spaces. On-site, or they could use five spaces on uh, East Jory Street. Uh, East Jory Street, though it is a collector roadway, it does have sharos, so it does allow on-street parking. And then bike racks, uh, suggested, recommended a condition for some additional information on bike racks, make sure that it complies with our standards for the multifamily. Next slide. Again, undergrounding of utilities, this relates to those that are along Northeast Benjamin Road. Next slide. Uh, public improvement conditions, and so these again are summaries, there's a condition for fire flow test results. Getting public improvement permits, dedication of right-of-way along Northeast Benjamin Road frontage. Three-quarter street improvement along Benjamin Road. Uh, improvements along uh, East Portland Road, Oregon ninety-nine W. Final plans for East Jory Street showing twelve-foot travel lanes and sharos, sharos are uh, shared roadways between vehicles and bicycles. Uh, Willa Kinsey and Jory Streets need to comply with our public works and design and construction standards. Next slide. East Jory Street is that minor collector, and so it's got to comply for development, meeting that cross-section, same thing for Willa Kinsey, which is a local street. Complying with our cross-section improvements. Uh, obtaining permits from Yan Hill County for improvements to Northeast Benjamin frontage. Uh, Northeast Benjamin is a county roadway, though it is within the city limits of Newburgh. Uh, coordinate with the county and ODOT regarding the issue enclosure of Northeast Benjamin Road. And installing street name signs uh, at all street intersections. Should note that when you drive through town, the green signs are public streets, if you see a blue sign, it's a private street. Next slide. Engineering recommended a condition again related back to that twenty. Engineering recommended a condition again related back to that 25 foot wide dense buffer along Benjamin Road for the commercial portion. Which complies with a prior land use condition. Meeting access spacing standards was another. Recommendation from the engineering division. Driveways for the multifamily portion. They were trying to get those aligned as close as they could with the private streets to the north of East Jory Street. Lighting analysis for the street lighting. And that would include the streets within. Willikenzie and Joy Street, but as well as Benjamin and East Portland Road. Then water service. All the water improvements need to comply with our public works, design and construction standards. Next slide. There's a condition to abandon or remove the septic systems, the in accordance with Yan Hill County standards. The wastewater service, again complying with our designing construction standards. And we also have standards on a waste pump station because there is a lift station that's proposed in this development. And then a condition that demonstrates that any land intended to be dedicated to the city, then this relates to track B. Is that it does not contain any wetlands, wetland buffers or stream corridor overlays. Next slide. Continuing on with the public improvements. An updated wastewater analysis report for the proposed lift station. Necessary utility easements, again complying with our designing construction standards. Final stormwater report and construction plans. They need to obtain a DEQ 1200C permit. And then permanent maintenance access. Via paved road shall extend to within 10 feet of the center of all private stormwater structures. So that stormwater facility I mentioned earlier, that's over on the very east side of the site, that will actually be a private facility, not a public facility. Next slide. From our public works department, they had conditions related to a some. Stormwater structures upstream and downstream of the detention pond. Then private maintenance agreements for the onsite stormwater facility. And obtaining public improvement permits to install the stormwater system improvements. Those would. Be in the roadways. Next slide. Public comments. So we'll get to this. Because I'll get to take a breath and have a sip of water. But there been a variety of public comments have come in. So your initial staff report that was sent out. Had the first round of public comments. There was supplemental comments that came in that were distributed on Monday. The cutoff was noon. And then this evening, we've received additional comments that have come in after. 12pm on Monday, and I will need to read each one of those into the public record this evening. Next slide. So staff's recommendation at this point, without all the public testimony is to. Adopt planning commission order 2022-06 with the conditions. Approving the conditional use permit, CUP 22001, PUD 22001. And then referencing the two tax slots that this proposed development is on. That is staff's presentation. Forty-four slides in less than 25 minutes, so.
I couldn't have done any better. For speed.
So at this juncture. Mr. Vice Chair. It's the opportunity for the applicant to make a presentation. And so we have the. Three J consulting team here with us this evening. We have Mercedes, Aaron, Jim. We have Matt with Kittleson who did the traffic work. And so I will turn this over to Mercedes.
Thank you Doug. I'll just share my screen here. Some of this might be a little bit repetitive with Doug's presentation, but I'll be as brief as I can. It looks like I am not able to share.
Robin, can you make sure you got to share a screen?
Alright, there we go. Alright, good evening. My name is Mercedes Sarah. I'm a planning consultant representing the applicant on Crestview Green Plan Unit Development. With me tonight, our members of the project team will be available to answer any questions. I'd like to thank the planning commission for their time tonight, and we'd like to thank staff for the staff report and presentation. The applicant Westwood Homes is proposing a 133 unit residential development. Their proposed PUD will be a mixture of 14 single family detached homes, 96. Attached, single family homes and 24 multifamily apartments. The site has a split zoning designation with a mix of R1 low density residential, R2 medium density residential and C2 community commercial. Presidential uses are allowed in the C2 zone under the conditional use permit as Doug indicated. The southern half of the site is zone C2 and includes a mix of attached townhomes. And multifamily homes as well as public utility areas. There are two primary criteria that the development must meet under the conditional use criteria. First. Development must be reasonably compatible with and have minimal impact on the livability. And appropriate development of abutting properties. Considerations for compatibility include scale, bulk, coverage, density and availability of utilities. And generation of traffic. The subject site is located at the edge of urban growth boundary with unincorporated crackmas county low density residential to the north, south and east. To the west, the development is directly adjacent to the Crestview Crossing PUD, which includes single family detached. Small scale, single family and multifamily and commercial development. The proposed single family detached lots along the northern property line meet the size, lot size and setback requirements of the joint five party agreement with the neighbors. These homes are reasonably compatible with the abutting single family homes to the west, which are similar in scale and density. The attached single family homes directly adjacent to the small scale, single family detached homes to the west in Crestview Crossing are similar in scale. Density and coverage and height to be adjacent development. And the multifamily building is located directly adjacent to the neighboring multifamily development. The proposed building will be compatible in scale and density and coverage to the neighboring development. The location of the stormwater detention facility and sanitary sewer pump station along with landscaping on the south and east will provide additional buffering. For the property, properties adjacent to the. Subject site to the east. The second criteria of the conditional use permit is that the location will provide convenient and functional living, working and shopping and will be attractive as. The nature of the use warrants. The proposed development will be directly adjacent to Crestview Crossing Development, which provides a mix of housing types and commercial retail uses. Nearby development includes Providence Hospital, multiple retail, commercial shopping areas shown here on the slide. And the proposed development is located to provide convenient and functional living, working and shopping. Proposed development will provide an attractive and cohesive neighborhood consistent with neighboring development. The proposed development has been designed as a plan unit development, similar to the Crestview Crossing next door. The purpose of the plan development is to provide a comprehensive planning of large scale sites. That are equal to or better quality than traditional development and are reasonably compatible with surrounding development. The PUD criteria allows flexibility and design placement of buildings, open spaces, outdoor areas. Circulation facilities, parking and storage. The PUD criteria promotes a variety of uses and dwelling types with densities calculated based on the number of bedrooms rather than the number of units. As Doug mentioned, we will be working in three phases shown here. The first stage shown in blue. Include a mix of single family homes and townhomes, street and utility improvements. Second phase shown in green will include single family homes, townhomes and street and utility improvements. And the final phase will be the multifamily site. The subject site has a maximum allowable density of 2,905 points based on the available land and each zoning criteria as Doug mentioned. The proposed development has density point calculation of 1,528, which falls well under the maximum allowed on the site. As part of the PUD application, the applicant is permitted to request adjustments or modifications under the underlying standards. The application or the applicant is requesting adjustments to the minimum lot size setbacks and lot width and frontage in the R2 and C2 zones. As well as adjustments to the sun exposure standard and the glazing on the townhome units. The minimum lot size request would allow a 1,330 square foot minimum lot size with an average of 1,605 square feet. And the R2 and C2 zones for just the townhomes. Minimum lot size and furniture standards would allow a minimum of 19 feet rather than 20 feet. In the C2 zone requires a 10 foot setback from the, from the R2 zone. Because this is a continuous development, the applicant is requesting the minimum setback for the townhomes to zero feet and five feet. The sun exposure modification only applies to the north, south sun exposure on those townhome units. The setback spacing between the townhome buildings does not meet the minimum exposure requirement. This is applicable to 20 of the units located on the interior lots. Modification is also requested for the side yard façades facing the street. The ground floor units of the townhomes will be garage spaces and therefore windows are not proposed. The modification request for the side yard façades, which fits the street. Is for the glazing on those sides. It would only impact 14 of the townhome units. Here are perspective images showing the general character scale and massing of the proposed homes. All building design and site criteria will be confirmed at the time of building permits middle for each unit. Utility improvements include sanitary pump station, stormwater treatment and detention facility and the extension of public utility lines, including domestic water. Reclaimed water, stormwater and sanitary sewer. Site is adequately served with the proposed improvements. The proposed onsite circulation network will include extensions of Jory and Willikenzie from Crestview to Benjamin Road. The Benjamin Road and Highway 99 intersection will be closed for the Newburgh PSP and the proposed ODOT bypass development plan. In the current configuration, Benjamin will connect with Jory Road. The future development of ODOT bypass may include a frontage street connecting Benjamin and Jory to the east. Primary access to the development from Highway 99 will be from Crestview Drive. Access to the proposed homes will be from internal, local and private street. Private street network. Now Matt Hugart from Kittleson will discuss the transportation. System or transportation impact analysis.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Mercedes, can you back up to the previous? Yeah. So good evening, everybody. I'm Matt Hugart from Kittleson and Associates. We prepared the traffic impact study for the proposed development. And I wanted to spend a few slides here this evening. Kind of summarizing kind of the high points of that effort, but then focusing. Mainly on what I think a lot of people are here this evening to talk about, which is the Benjamin Road. Potential closure with. 99W. And so I wanted to kind of walk everyone through some of the transportation related. Issues that came about as we were preparing the study and how it affected. The proposed layouts shown on the screen here. I will say with regards to the traffic study, we did complete it. We did submit it and it was reviewed by. City, county and ODOT staff and generally speaking, the, the infrastructure. In and around this site can absorb the additional traffic generated by the proposed development. And there is adequate capacity at some of the key intersections such as 99W and the Providence signal. The one that will be serving the Crestview Crossing Development, which is rapidly under construction and should be open soon. So tying into that infrastructure will allow this site to be adequately served from a transportation standpoint. But as I know, a lot of people are here this evening are concerned about the Benjamin Road closure. So I wanted to spend the next few slides going over that Mercedes, if you can advance please. So the Benjamin Road, as shown here, the Crestview Green is, is highlighted in the green shading. And you can see we've outlined Benjamin Road and its connection to 99W. Today it is a full movement intersection with 99W at stop controlled as you're southbound on Benjamin approaching the highway. It is an unimproved roadway. County, unimproved county roadway. Its intersection with 99W is very hard to see if you're not accustomed to. Driving in and out of it on a daily basis. It's particularly hard to see at night when the street lighting is, is not very. Significant in this part of the city. And so I, I think for, based on, you know, just a review of traffic patterns, it definitely serves. The majority of the homes and the small businesses along it, but it by and large is not a. Major sort of regional highway in other or roadway. In other words, you don't. Travel on Benjamin to get to regional destinations. It's a roadway that serves the. Myriad of homes and businesses in and around it. But just due to its circum. Navigable nature doesn't have a strong sort of regional connection unlike some other facilities, not that, not to. Say that there aren't some of those types of traffic volumes on it. By and large, it serves the residences that live along it. My next slide. So within the study, I think when we looked at the analysis, we, we measured the demand on Benjamin Road. And just a couple of quick numbers to point out here during the AM peak hour, which would be the kind of the peak morning time period, seven to eight ish. In the morning. You have about 32 vehicles traveling north on Benjamin and about 57 traveling south. And that's pretty characteristic of a facility like this where you probably have more people exiting. Benjamin onto 99W is or on their way to school or work. And it kind of reverses itself in the, in the late evening peak hour, that five to six time period. You have more vehicles northbound on Benjamin and much fewer southbound. These people are returning from their workday. So volume wise, it's pretty characteristic of, of a, of this type of roadway. It's about 100 vehicles. Give or take in either direction during these two peak time periods. Operationally at the 99W intersection today. It, it meets the ODOT mobility target. In other words, the, the standard that ODOT has set for roadways like this intersecting 99W. The amount of volume on that road does not exceed ODOT's mobility target. But not, that doesn't mean that there aren't struggles for vehicles turning on and off of, off of Benjamin during these peak times when they're looking for acceptable gaps. In what can be a pretty relentless traffic stream on 99W during these peak time period. We did look at the crash data and there were some not surprising patterns in the crash data of all the crashes. Most of them were associated with what we'll call southbound left turns from Benjamin Road on 99W. But nonetheless, those crashes were not significant enough to exceed. The statewide average for facilities of that size and nature. So. While Benjamin Road is, you know, heavily traveled facility and it does have some crashes on it. We didn't find that it's, it's currently exceeding any standards or, or, or safety based threshold criteria. Next slide. So all that to say, I'm kind of setting up these next couple of slides. I, I wanted to sort of point out. The, the, the infrastructure plan that's being put forth in this development. Is really trying to reflect what are some preliminary plans that we, we all know to be. In play right now with regards to the future Newburgh Dundee bypass. At least the leg that hasn't been built yet. This image kind of shows an overlay of that bypass and apologize for the clarity here. It's kind of hard to see the. The details, but if you looked at that blue dashed line, it says future bypass alignment. That is essentially, yes, thank you. That is essentially going to be. How 99W today connects in to the future bypass. That's going to be built and designed to be more primarily on the south side of the existing roadway. And as such, the preliminary plans show that Benjamin Road, when that happens. Will not connect to that future bypass alignment directly like it does today. Instead, it's going to connect into what they believe to be. Or at least what has been preliminary put forth as a frontage road shown in the green dash line there. And that frontage road is essentially going to connect back into and become. Jury, jury lane, which is part of, of the infrastructure as of this development as part and as well as the adjacent presto crossing development. So what we've done with the site plan is just to reflect what, what we, what we believe to be the latest and greatest. Plans that ODOT will put forth when they, when they get down to actually building or designing the building, the bypass. We're basically just reflecting this, this future plan set. So next slide. We're basically just reflecting this, this future plan set. So next slide. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time then talking about the consideration of, of how we dealt with Benjamin Road, given this kind of future anticipated alignment scenario. And there's actually five, five considerations. So next slide. The first one, we're just kind of label option zero was to not connect to Benjamin Road. And that was one of the earlier designs that, that this development team put forth. In other words, we would stub out both Willa Kenzie and Jory Lane and not connect them directly to Benjamin, but to barricade and, and temporarily close them off to Benjamin so that Benjamin can continue to operate much like it does today with a full access to ninety nine W, with the intent that maybe at some point when ODOT gets around to building the bypass, those connections could be connected to Benjamin Road. However, I think the city came back very early in the process and rightfully so, and demonstrated that, you know, this particular design doesn't really mesh with their goals for connectivity and to maintain the grid, or not the grid network, but the circulation system that's, that's planned. And therefore, we quickly sort of moved past a scenario where we didn't connect to Benjamin Road. And that presented a number of challenges as all, as all explained in the next few slides. So the next one would be to connect to Benjamin Road and allow Benjamin at ninety nine W to maintain its full movement. And the, the struggles and the concerns that came about under this scenario, as you can see, you know, Jory, Jory Road connecting to Benjamin very close to the ninety nine W intersection. It leaves just a, you know, hundred, less than a hundred feet, more like fifty feet of spacing between that intersection and the highway itself. And then the Willa Kenzie spacing isn't much better. It's just another hundred, hundred and fifty feet away. So the primarily, the primary struggle with this option is it violates sort of the intersection spacing standards that ODOT has put forth with regards to accesses on a, on a facility like Benjamin Road being so close to ninety nine W. And it presents a safety and operational challenge that they like to avoid. So that became a scenario that we had to try and find a solution to. So the next option, if you can advance the slide, would be what we're calling the truncate at Jory Road. So it's basically what we've put forth in our plan today, which, so what, basically what it means is Benjamin Road gets closed off from ninety nine and it sweeps around and the alignment essentially becomes Jory Road itself. And then that would connect over to Crestview Drive and then provide the connection at the Providence Signal. The third option, we've heard a couple of, of individuals submitting comments, well, why can't we just limit the access to ninety nine W? And we thought of that, talked to ODOT about that. And the yellow line that you see on ninety nine W, I know someone could point that out for me with the cursor on the screen, you know, right there, please. Thank you. That represents what we consider and what ODOT would like to see under a right and write out access, which is a raised median. And there's a couple of challenges associated with a raised median design. The first of which is the design of that median would have to be fairly long along the ninety nine W alignment so that it would prevent people from cheating the, the median itself. In other words, you don't want someone to make a right out of the highway and then immediately make a U-turn at the, at the, at the end of the median. So ODOT design standards call for that median to be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet in length from the Benjamin Road intersection in both directions. And the challenge here is you can see there's some properties on the south side of the highway there that would be impacted by that median and would restrict their ability to access their property without any other means of access. So that became a quick, an option that was very hard to, to deal with. So ODOT made comment that that one wouldn't be seen with a very good light. In addition to the fact that anytime you put a median on a state highway, there's a group called the Mobility Advisory Committee, and they represent the freight industry. And they typically oppose any kind of physical barriers in the state highway that restrict their ability to maneuver high and wide loads of, of freight on the system itself. Lastly, option four, and then I'll, I'll be done, is another option that's been put forth is a right in, left in access. So in other words, we restrict the Benjamin Road connection to ninety nine W to inbound traffic only. In other words, turning movements off of ninety nine only. And if we were to try and connect it in to, say, the alignment that we have shown here in our project, we can't really connect it in a way that provides adequate spacing from the highway. So in this particular case, we kind of roughed a, a roughed image in here. And it shows that that spacing between the, the right in driveway off of, of ninety nine W and the connection back to Benjamin Road or, or Jory Street would only be limited to, you know, fifty, seventy five feet, which is not enough from a spacing standard. So, so I guess this is one way of saying everywhere we looked, everywhere we tried, there were a number of, of other challenges or roadblocks that prevented, you know, some of the outright application of these, these designs and kind of led us back to the design that you see proposed in the application, which is to connect Benjamin Road back directly into Jory Street and provide a sort of a smooth connection. It not only meets the city's T S P, it's consistent with the preliminary designs that ODOT has put forth with regards to the, to the bypass. So that's all I'll say for now. Definitely be open for questions during the question session. Thank you.
And with that, we'd like to thank you for your time tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Mr. Vice Chair, it's back to you. And we are to the point in the agenda about testimony from any other proponents. So if I may, I'll just kind of maybe set some rules of the road. We have a variety of people who are attendees this evening. There are eighteen. If you are a proponent, if you would raise your hand, and then Robin can promote you sequentially so that you can provide your comments as we get then to the point of opponents will follow the same protocol. It's raise your hand and Robin then can work through the list. It's very important that all the testifiers this evening, please provide your name and your mailing address so that we can capture that. So Mr. Vice Chair, back to you for the proponents.
All right, let's begin with any proponents that would like to speak.
So Robin looking.
Okay, we have a Vicky Shepherd.
Okay.
Vicky.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, I'm Vicky Shepherd. I live at three zero two, three zero Northeast Benjamin Road. I've already submitted a, a letter with thirty one of my neighbors' signatures on it. And we all live on Benjamin or on the side streets of Benjamin. And we are for the closing of Benjamin Road. It's really dangerous along Benjamin Road. I was out trimming trees the other day and I had an orange vest on and an orange cone in the street. And I cannot tell you almost how many times I almost got hit with cars going so quick. I live, I am actually the closest house to ninety nine W. There's a really steep hill there. People can't see really well. If we, if there's any way to slow traffic and to close Benjamin, I think that's the best thing to do. I myself am the one that will be taking the stream corridor down there or the wetland. That will become a part of my property. And I have been working with the developers. They're great people to work with. I think that their planning is great. I think that they're really gonna do a good job for the city of Newburgh. The, the only thing I would add is I disagree with the transportation report though, where there were only poor accidents. We, you know, we're, we're on the outskirts of Yamhill County. The Newburgh Police Department is really not in our area, although we're close. And there have been many, many accidents there where there have been no police response, which is really unfortunate. So not all of the accidents, I don't believe, have ever been recorded that happened on Benjamin. And I agree that left turn out of Benjamin is really, really dangerous. In fact, a lot of the neighbors here go the back way. They go back to, through Springbrook because turning left off of Benjamin is really dangerous. Thanks for your time tonight. I appreciate you guys. I really do. And Doug has been great also to work with. I appreciate him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other proponents that would like to speak?
Yes, sir. We have Paul Anderson.
Hi there, this is Paul Anderson.
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Vicky's next door neighbor. Carla and I live at four six oh one Blue Heron Court. And so our property is also adjacent to the R one section, about two and a half of the lots. So here's my letter that I sent in to Doug earlier. Thank you for an invitation to share feedback and concerns as we all want Newburgh to be an excellent place to live. As neighbors adjacent to two and a half lots to the north of the Crestview Green proposed development, we appreciate the careful thought given to the concerns and livability interests of the larger community. Concerns we feel are as follows. A, we welcome our new neighbors and want to ensure the aesthetic livability and privacy of their property, of their properties and ours. B, we request a permanent wall of the same character as the brick or landscaped center block, six foot, that the subdivision to the west has installed. Thank you for that. C, we hope that as many trees can be preserved as possible on both sides of the boundary. And looking at the plans though, it looks like most of the trees to the south or in the lots themselves will be lost. But we have trees on our side and we'd like to preserve those as many are close to the wall. So D, we request a four foot easement or setback so that the footing upon which the wall is built does not damage the root systems of our trees. Oak for arboida phoetinia. And looking at the, the plot that you have, I counted fourteen of our trees. We have six really large trees. Would hate to lose those. And also two dozen phoetinia trees. Some of these are twenty five feet high. And those are not listed in the plat, but we'd hate to lose those. And, and they're planted right next to the wall. So these are near the property line. So this would alleviate if we had a bit of a setback to the same level that the Vicky and Dan Shepherd property is, which is four feet. Then the problem of a four foot difference would, 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 would be dealt with. This would also make the wall then congruent with the setback for the Shepherd property as well. E, in the interest of privacy, we would rather not have windows looking down into our yard from next door. So either one story homes as a development in the west has constructed or some other means of respecting neighbors' privacy would be appreciated. So those are our main concerns and we appreciate their taking into consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other proponents that would like to speak?
Yes, we have a Christian Di Benedetti.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I stay as attendee or analyst.
I offered to promote you as panelist. Did you want to be a panelist?
Okay.
I promoted, but it wasn't accepted.
It does, okay, let's see here.
Try again if you like. There you go. You should be now able to use your video if you want to. There you go.
Hello? Thanks, everyone, for your time and for having, for me. My name is Christian Di Benedetti. I live in Newburgh. I'm a Newburgh native. I'm just gonna go ahead and read the letter that I submitted. My mailing address is three oh two oh three Northeast Benjamin Road here in Newburgh. I'm the owner of Wolves and People Farmhouse Brewery, a small farm-based brewery operation on Benjamin Road. The proposed closure of Benjamin at ninety nine by the Crestview Green Development will be a hardship. Benjamin is a safe and long established route and should be improved, not removed. While we will welcome our future neighbors, there could be months or years of construction which will negatively impact our farm business and inconvenience current area farmers and residents. As proposed, visitors to our operation will have to drive an extra eight tenths of a mile in each direction traversing these modern residential and retail developments, which will add traffic to those planned streets. Is inconvenient and alters the aura we have so long enjoyed. So after consulting with area landowners, elected officials, traffic experts and our land use lawyer, Mr. Dean Altman of Altman Law Group in Portland, we have come up with a possible solution with a simple sensible modification to the existing plan.
And this was brought up earlier by one of your colleagues from the development of one, the far end.
The south end of Benjamin Road at ninety nine could remain untouched or better yet evolve into a safer one-way section at ninety nine, retaining some sense of its peaceful aura. Ideas on the record and we're preparing further input. Simultaneously, we do advocate lowering the speed limit, which is a wish we share with many of our neighbors.
Crestview Green is ambitious.
And ought to be a welcome and valuable addition to Newburgh. But its proposed rerouting of county roads through minor collector streets is not a sound plan. Those new neighborhood boats will be far more pleasant with footpath traffic, not flatbeds of grapes, hay bales, and in our case dripping wet spent barley destined for a Dundee pig farm.
What's more, the vast majority of our guests at Farmhouse Brewery arrived via the leaky secluded feeling Benjamin Road, which I am old enough to fondly remember as about four.
So let's keep it as beautiful and serene as we can while making our new neighbors welcome and well accommodated.
We have now gathered some eighteen hundred signatures and dozens of comments, many from neighbors, including seventy three from Newburgh on a petition requesting more time to study the issues at hand and keep the road open.
The petition is open and can be viewed at change.org. With this testimony, I submit written comments from just a few of them. I've submitted those to Doug Rex and asking that he can read them for us later. And pursuant to O R S one nine seven dot seven nine seven, I am requesting that the record be held open to submit additional argument and evidence. Christian, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Um, I believe that was opposing the, uh, the plan, but are there any other proponents for this section?
Um, let's see. No, one of them left, it looks like. Okay, I don't see anymore.
Thank you. I guess we'll go on to opponents then. If anyone would like to oppose, please raise your hand as well. As Doug mentioned before, state your name and your mailing address. Thank you.
Looking for hands.
So again, if anybody would like to testify, please do the raise hand in Zoom and Robin will connect you.
I see hands going up and then hands going down, so.
I'm seeing the same thing.
Not currently seeing anything. I know David Wall.
I saw, I'm reading the chat, so it says David Wall says he's raised, he's raised his hand.
Oh, okay. Well, I can go ahead and promote him. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good evening. I, uh, I'm an opponent of anything to do with this project in particular, primarily because of the concentration of building that's going on within Newburgh, but that's another matter. With reference to Benjamin Road and the two service roads that entering onto Benjamin Road, it is my position that this is very ill advised. Benjamin Road should be should have been closed a long time ago. It's exceptionally dangerous for anybody, for example, that it's a stop sign with somebody that's coming down off of Highway ninety nine that's unfamiliar with the construction of the roadway at that point, which dictates a tremendous reduction in speed. Otherwise, you'll end up broadsiding on the driver's side of anybody at that locale. With reference to the effects of the local brewery, they do have a safe entrance and exit on ninety nine where they've operated a little nut stand there for decades that could easily be used to access the bar area without any type of interruption in their business. And of course, then, of course, they have egress onto Benjamin as they leave or go back through ninety nine without having to have ingress or egress into the development itself. Now, the way it's constructed with the two ingress and egress roads from the development, you will have significant traffic problems with reference to crashes. That's a very narrow winding road in there, especially at nighttime. It's it's not lit at all. So be a really taken a chance. I particularly avoid that area of transit for any reason. It is basically unsafe at any speed. Like Vicky has spoken earlier, very eloquently, we don't have Newburgh Dundee police patrols per se. Now, true, they do fill if there's a need by the sheriff's department for some type of serious police business that requires more than one officer, but even such, in my time period here of over six years, I've only seen sheriff deputies in my neighborhood or on Benjamin two different times and all this, all this length of time I've been here. So police patrols in this area are virtually non existent, especially within the county because of the fact the county is seven hundred and fifty square miles of roads and only a scant number of deputies to patrol them. Closing now with reference to the bypass, not that I know of any of your names are familiar with the Parkway Committee, but I've been attending them quite frequently and I'll tell you, the third phase of the bypass is many, many years away. The second phase alone is in jeopardy, funding in jeopardy for a variety of reasons as if anybody out there has paid the slightest attention to the financial markets, meaning, you know, the quantitative easing tightening by the Fed, interest rates, all that core inflation business. Money is getting tough. Now, Odette does have a unique way of getting money, but even then the cost of money, the materials, the right of way, everything is going up. So the second phase is in jeopardy, especially with the three mile lane project down there proposed in McMenville. Now that has a direct influence to phase three. And so any type of discussion about how phase three is going to affect your project is many years in the future. Your best bet, safety all the way around, is the very well orchestrated construction of Crestview. And the light there gives people coming off ninety nine plenty of viewing space to see where the lights are at, the warning lights, even in the stormiest of all nights. It's the safest way to approach this complex, especially if one's going to turn on Crestview, if one's going to go into your project, that also is safe from the ninety nine as far as your slowdown lane that you have constructed. But stay away from trying to utilize Benjamin Road for any type of facilitation of your project desire. You're going to have nothing but trouble. Now, with reference to the pond that the owner of the brewery or his parents own the property, but nonetheless, it would be interesting because it is foreseeable, you know, let's take the the grandmother with her little baby and or grandson or whatever in the car accidentally steps on the accelerator instead of the brake. They're going to go unmolested into the pond. Okay, so therein lies who's responsible to build some type of safety barricade there. I would think the property owner with the pond would be, but that's for your lawyers to discuss. But Benjamin Road in that area is not to be considered. It's like the variety or the mass roads throughout Oregon. Oregon set up as an agricultural state, not as the type of state that it's morphed into. These little country roads are not designed, even take the heavy trucks. And if you'll notice, there is a trucks, a warning sign, a traffic sign that prohibits trucks from going onto Benjamin Road, but they do that as if they could care less. Why? There's no enforcement. Their GPS says take a right. They take a right. They don't care about the sign. It's none of your fault. You don't see it. We see it all the time and there's not one time that stretched limousines coming into this brewery or tour buses coming into this brewery in the summertime. They all cross the double yellow lines in several spots. And if you're not paying attention, you're going to either go off into one of the ravines or hopefully not hit somebody. Well, hopefully there won't be any accident. This occurs at either end of Benjamin. Then you're going to find out the folks that live on Putnam Road, which is a gravel country road, are going to be up in arms with the dust clouds that are going to be emanating onto their property from your development, even if you do close off Benjamin and you have your two access roads onto Benjamin.
Hey, David.
Yes.
Your your five minutes is up and I we also.
That's good enough. That's good enough. I didn't know.
When you also need get your address for the record, please.
Okay, also, I was not even notified since my pasture doesn't have an address, but my address is one thirty seven fifty Northeast Lake Shore Drive, which is right next to Joyce's house and you could see that on your map. And it's right across from the brewery, which you can see from the dilapidated hazelnut or whatnot that you can you can see. But anyway, I have a commanding view of Benjamin and I've always given the police departments jurisdiction to set on my land, set up radar traps if they wanted to just to ensure public safety. That being said, any other questions? And I apologize. I didn't see a clock for my minutes.
That's okay. I'm the timekeeper also.
Okay, well, you blew it, Doug, but you're a great guy, so you're forgiven.
All right, Mr. Vice Chair, then I think it's one more round of seeing if there are any additional comments for opponents or undecideds.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents that would like to speak?
All right, we're not seeing any. So this is my. You see one?
Analyst that has a hand. Greg Hafter.
Can't hear you, Greg.
Wanted to.
There you go. Try again. You're you're kind of garbled. We can't hear you, Greg.
Not sure what I can do different.
Now we got you. Keep going. Yeah.
Okay, I just kind of wanted to point out the county is trying to remain neutral in this situation. You're all sides and with the ending, it is our right of way. We're trying to do the best, keep everybody's best interest in mind here. Myself as a local, longtime new Yamhill County resident, I definitely understand the challenges involved here. I I sat out on Highway ninety nine for about twenty minutes this morning, kind of watching traffic patterns and saw one close, close call. Somebody tried to shoot the gap when they shouldn't have and traffic coming down the hill had to slow down in a hurry. So it is definitely, we're trying to balance safety concerns with access to the local, local folks that have businesses, you know, and just kind of wanted to just let everybody know we're going to do the best we can to take in all the information and and make the best choices for as many people as possible. So just wanted to kind of, kind of share that with everybody.
Thank you, Greg. So, Mr. Vice Chair, now is my opportunity where I get to speak again. So I have a bunch of information I need to read into the record that has been submitted that was provided to the city after twelve P M on May ninth. So here we go. This is from Susan Graham. He says, Dear Mr. Rex, I live in Independence, Oregon, about one hour drive to Newburgh and my favorite place to visit there, the Wolves and People Farmhouse Brewery. I have plenty of other brewery options closer to my home, but Wolves and People is a special place. I make a special trip to go there a few times a year and while in Newburgh, I spend money with other local businesses. There are very few true quotes farmhouse breweries in the United States, let alone Oregon. Logston in Hood River and Agrarian Ales near Eugene are the only other true Oregon farmhouse breweries. Close friends, others with farmhouse in their name are usually referring to the beer style rather than the site. Besides Wolves and People, Rogue used to operate a tap room at their farm near my house in Independence, but that closed during COVID and will probably never reopen to the public. Wolves and People and its charming rural atmosphere is a true farmhouse brewery are something precious and worth protecting. Given your role in one of the top tourism destinations in Oregon, I'm sure you can appreciate how the beer industry brings money into our state and our towns. Closing Benjamin Road at ninety nine W will effectively close Wolves and People from all but the most diehard vacationers and locals. I understand the proposed alternative road will add almost an extra mile through the traffic of a busy mixed use residential business development to the trip to Wolves and People. Will ruin the lovely rural approach currently there and will disrupt the surrounding community for no good reason. More importantly, as an attorney, I am rather shocked that limited notice of this plan was shared with the surrounding community. I understand that a more sensitive alternative has been proposed to make Benjamin Road at ninety nine W a right and left turn in only departure from ninety nine, eliminating left turns out of Benjamin to ninety nine W. I urge the city of Newburgh to put the brakes on this project until sufficient time for public comments from neighborhood businesses, residents and environmental advocates may be heard and alternatives to the proposed plan may be fully considered. Thank you, Susan Graham. Next, Charles McClure. Hello, Doug. Thank you for explaining the hearing process to us. We submit the following for reading to the planning commission on May twelfth. We request that this hearing be continued to require the planning division to come up with a detailed description of the dense buffer along Benjamin Road. We are owners of the National Historic Register Home across Benjamin Road from the project in accordance with with three previous land use rulings, we are entitled to a dense buffer to block light, noise and sight from the development. The city does require buffer in concept in the staff report, but now is the time to describe what the buffer will actually contain. We especially need assurance from that the buffer will be a sight shield from the intrusive wall of thirty two foot tall, all jam packed structures to be built next to Benjamin Road. The buffer requirement should include a detailed plat of the types and spacing of trees and the shrubs to be planted as well as planting methods and maintenance requirements. We would be satisfied with the type of dense buffer proposed in our comments in attachment three to the staff report. Respectfully, Charles and Ellen McClure. Next up is John Reed. And for the record, I'm not opposed to the development that has been proposed at four eight one three and four eight two one Portland Road. I live directly across from the development. My biggest issue is the traffic. I would like to believe additional lights are being considered, especially at the Benjamin Road intersection. Since the inception of the bypass and now the development across from the hospital, the traffic has increased dramatically. I sometimes wait several minutes to merge into traffic, usually the center lane, then several more minutes to get into moving traffic. Even as a seasoned driver, it gets a bit hectic. I'm hoping for consideration that a road out the backside of my property be created. It is suggested for when the next phase of the bypass comes through. This could be many years away. If a full formal road is not feasible at this time, I suggest a gravel road that allows residents of Harmony and Clemick to merge onto Providence Drive where an existing light is currently. This would be a lot safer than risking life and limb as traffic is bound to increase even more as this and other developments unfold. Thank you, John Reed. Lena Taylor. Hi, Doug. I live off Benjamin, one house behind where the proposed new development is set to be. Typically, I encourage development of our town to grow the economy and create needed housing. However, this development paired with the other new one that is next to it is too much. Already seeing tangibles consequences as the wildlife impacted by the current development directly on my property. I noticed the increase of wildlife has taken sanctuary on my property and the resources to keep them thriving are being dwindled due to the overcrowding. Furthermore, cutting off Benjamin Road access is also a detriment to the people that live and work along Benjamin. We rely on the access too heavily for it to be closed off. I could tell you that all of the neighbors agree and opposed to having that that road access changed. The only amenable compromise would be a traffic light with ability to turn right or left. And I imagine that those who live up along the new proposed routes will be displaced or at the very least inconvenienced. How is any of this taking care of our community? This project needs better planning and consideration for the people, the land and wildlife that is already there. We aren't chopped liver. Don't let the developers treat us as such. Thanks for your consideration. Lena. Next is William Bryant. Mr. Rex, I'm I'm a longtime patron of Wolves and People and drive over from Portland once a month or so. I'm very unfamiliar with Sherwood. And as I imagine many of their customers are, I a detour to get to the brewery would almost certain hurt business. I can imagine all of the Portland Portlanders coming down ninety nine W doing fifty five miles per hour, preparing to slow quickly and turn right onto Benjamin Road, only to see that the road is closed. This will surely cause confusion amongst drivers and possibly cause unsafe conditions. Thank you, William Bryant. Next is Gina Stillwagon. Last year I bought a house on Benjamin Road because it seemed so quiet and peaceful. I was nervous about all of the new houses and people moving into the new subdivision of Crestview Creek. I'm still waiting to see how that impacts us. Now I heard that you are approving another two hundred and thirty three residences on Benjamin Road right near our home. I'm so upset about this. How can you do this when you don't even know how the city is going to handle all of those new homes? Can't we just wait and see a year after all the people move in there before we approve another two hundred and thirty three homes in such a condensed area? Approving Crestview Greens would be very irresponsible and inconsiderate to the neighbors of this area. What can we do to stop it? Respectfully, Gina Stillwagon. Maxine Agatha. Good evening, Doug. Please take the time to read through the following if you have not done so already and and know that I am not just one of many who is who is passionate about protecting this area of Newburgh. The following describes the hard. The following describes the hardships the plans will create as proposed and our ideas for potential solutions. Below are detailed reasoning hardship. The proposed closure of Benjamin Road will be a hardship for neighbors and our business. As proposed, visitors will have to have an extra eight tenths of a mile in order to arrive via large intersections traversing modern residential and retail developments and may endure months of years or years of heavy construction. Potential solution, make Benjamin Road at 99W a right in and left turn in only off of 99. Eliminate left turns out of Benjamin to 99. Reasoning Benjamin Road, which is a county road and not in the city of Newburgh would now become a one-way, one-way section of 99W and will be safer retaining some sense of its peaceful aura and views simultaneously. Lower the speed limit to twenty-five or even fifteen miles per hour and add speed bumps and signs to remain, remind drivers they are in a rural area home to neighbors, pets, livestock and wild animals. Jory Road, which is classified as a minor collector street, should not be expected to handle the regular traffic of an established county route. Make the proposed Joy Street yield to Benjamin's historically established local traffic via stop sign or other posted rule. In the event there are cars backing up, it is safer for them to do so on the proposed Collector Joy Street rather than on 99W or Benjamin Road. While the existing intersection is currently not ideal at Benjamin Road, nor is it uh, statistically much more dangerous. Let, let us take the appropriate opportunity to make it safer as a right in, left in only and more uh, secluded from the coming changes. Environmental concerns. The shaded and bucolic nature of Benjamin Road as it is now is worth saving and should be altered responsibly. After all, the route is named for local pioneer Benjamin Heater eighteen twenty-one to nineteen fourteen. Springbrook Farm was established on land that had been heaters in the area of our farm closest to the proposed development once belonged to Newburgh, Germany native Sebastian Brucher eighteen twenty-six to nineteen twenty-two. Who named the town Newburgh and became its first postmaster and school superintendent. He even had a sawmill on Springbrook Creek. Direct descendants of both Heater and Brucher have paid our farm brewery many happy visits. The bucolic arrival to our area is something we and our customers value deeply. The developers should be required to use properly shaded and environmentally sensitive lighting if any more is necessary at all. That can be proven will have no negative impact on human neighbors or on wildlife of the Springbrook Creek area, including bald eagles, red-tailed hawks, quails, doves, great bluehairs, horned owls, red-winged blackbirds, Pacific salivanders, hummingbirds, beavers and migratory species such as geese and western uh swallowtail butterflies. An unnecessary and brightly lit new intersection at Benjamin would negatively impact those species which we have uh, the responsibility to safeguard and can do so without much effort. Context and summary. Springbrook Farm gained its, his, uh, its four historic well-preserved craftsman buildings in nineteen twelve and became home to my family in nineteen sixty-seven. It was wonderful to grow up on this peaceful landmark property, which has been slowly but surely surrounded by development. Wolves and People founded in twenty fourteen and opened in twenty sixteen has been ranked as both the best brewery in Oregon in twenty eighteen Outside Magazine and as the eighteenth best small brewery in the world in twenty twenty-one Craft and, and Craft Beer and Brewery Magazine. Uh, among other accolades, it is the first ever farm-based brewery in Yamhill County, among the first in Newburgh and Yamhill County. The brewery attracts a respectful clientele from Newburgh and neighboring areas, the city of Portland and across the US and from abroad and has uh, donated to several local charities, including our neighborhood Providence Hospital. The vast majority of our guests arrive via the leafy secluded feeling Benjamin Road, which I am old enough to fondly remember as a route fours. Let's keep it as beautiful as we can while making our new neighbors welcome and accommodated. Terry Davidson. Well, I should have taken you up and split this up, but I'm going through it.
You could, you could always email me them Doug.
I'm getting close to the end.
I have them also Doug, if you want me to read some.
I just need a drink of water here for a minute, folks. Okay. Uh, Terry Davidson. Mr. Rux, I'm a resident of the area affected by the Benjamin Road closure. Uh, twenty-nine six oh one Northeast Putnam Road. I'm aware of the petition being signed by people that don't even live in the area, so I want to express my support for the plan. I've been at the same address for thirty-one years and have been aware of this plan the whole time. I fully support this plan as the traffic on Benjamin Road has become a racetrack for those that want to avoid a few traffic lights. The intersection at Highway ninety-nine is dangerous as well. Please proceed with the plan as has been on the books for decades. In fact, please expedite the plan. The brewery that will be suffering hardship is a newcomer. Worried that their customers will have to drive an extra mile. So what? Thank you, Terry Davidson. Next. This is a letter from Christian D. Benedetti. The founder of Wolves and People Farmhouse Brewery. Uh, to the city of Newburgh Community Development Department. I'm a Newburgh native and the owner of Wolves and People Farmhouse Brewery, a small farm-based brewery operation on Benjamin Road. The proposed closure of Benjamin Road at ninety-nine W by the Crestview Green Development will be a hardship Benjamin is a safe and long-established route and should be and should be improved, not removed. While we welcome our future neighbors, there could be months or years of construction which will negatively impact our farm business and inconvenience current area farmers and residents. As proposed, visitors to the operation will have to drive an extra eight tenths of a mile each direction traversing these modern residential retail developments, which will add traffic to the planned streets is inconvenient and alters the aura we have so long enjoyed. After consulting with area landowners, elected officials, traffic experts and our land use lawyer, Mr. Dean Alterman of Alterman Law Group in Portland, we have come up with the possible solutions with simple sensible modifications to the existing plan. For one, the far south end of Benjamin Road at ninety-nine W would remain untouched or better yet evolve into a safer one-way section at ninety-nine W retaining some sense of its peaceful aura and accessibility without affecting developers' plans. We have submitted some of these ideas on the record and are preparing further input. Simultaneously, we advocate lowering the speed, which is a wish we share with many neighbors. Crestview Green is ambitious and ought to be a welcome and valuable addition to Newburgh. But its proposed rerouting of county roads through minor collector streets is not a sound plan. Uh, those new neighborhood roads will be far more pleasant with footpath traffic, not flatbeds of grapes, hay bales, and in our case dripping wet spent barley destined for a Dundee Pink Farm. What's more, the vast majority of our guests at this farmhouse brewery are arrived via the leafy secluded feeling Benjamin Road, which I am old enough to fondly remember as route four. Let's keep it as beautiful and serene as we can while making our neighbors welcome and well accommodated. We have now gathered some seventeen hundred signatures and dozens of comments, ma- many from neighbors on a petition requesting more time to study the issues at hand and to keep the road open. The petition is opening can be viewed at www.chang.org uh, forward slash P forward slash keep dash our historic, our dash historic dash road dash safe dash from dash developers. Uh, with this testimony, I submit written comments for just a few of them pursuant to RS one ninety-seven seven ninety-seven. I request that the record be held open to submit additional arguments and evidence. And Mr. D. Benedetti made some previous comments verbally as well. To that effect. Uh, another one we received from the Mr. D. Benedetti. Is that, uh, Doug, here are the comments from our petition signers and supporters. We would like to have read aloud. Additionally, I include the petition's current signers list as of midday today, and this came in on Wednesday, May eleventh. There are one thousand seven hundred and thirty-four signers overall with seventy-three signers from the Newburgh area code. Naturally, we do not think that the entire petition list of seventeen hundred names need to be read aloud, but we would like that the petition itself be entered into the record. So Christian, thank you, because I did not want to read seven hundred names. For seventeen hundred. Uh, next is Mr. Paul Anderson. He did make some verbal comments, but he did submit this in to the records that hello Doug, my name is Paul Anderson. Uh, adjacent neighbors to the Crestview Crossing subdivision proposal, I would like to share brief testimony in this evening's meeting, but that, if that would be possible, I'd also be happy to submit something in writing, even though I've missed the May ninth deadline. Basically supportive of the new development concern about our numerous trees and shrubs near the property line oak for our provider, Fautini, et cetera. Hoping that is similar setback for the two point five lots adjacent to our hundred and twenty-five foot property line similar to the request of Vicky and Dan Shepherd four feet. We do need a permanent wall, but the root systems and trees are the concern with, uh, great appreciation, Paul Anderson. And Mr. Anderson already read his letter into the record, so I will not reread that to you. So those were all the additional comments that I have received.
Staff, are there any commissioners that have anything they would like to ask staff or anything regarding the report that they would like to comment about? Hearing.
Yeah, Commissioner, we saw here. Um, I just, um, like a little, um, clarification, if I could, on the solar setback issue. It sounds like that's, um, not affecting that much of that many of the structures. But could I just get a little bit of elaboration on that? Maybe from Mercedes and you spoke to that.
Sure. So, um, on the townhome units, there's a five-foot setback on either side and they're facing east-west. So the north-south solar requirement means between those two buildings, the sun needs to be able to reach down to the first floor of that townhome. And because the buildings are ten feet apart, it is just not going to be able to reach down that far. Um, those units are townhome units and they're the ones that are separated from each other. Obviously, the ones that are connected wouldn't be impacted because they do not have side yards. Um, so those account for twenty-eight total townhome units only on the interior lots, on the exterior lots, the ones that are along Jory and Willakinsy Road, those will meet the solar standards.
Okay, okay. So a potential buyer would be able to take that into account if they, if they wanted solar down the line. Okay. And just, um, one other thing where the proponents and, um, you group, where do you stand on the proposal, the, the thing that seems to just make the most sense to me is that right in, right out for Benjamin Road. Um, it eliminates that hard left turn problem, but still allows traffic to flow up to the brewery and all. Is that something the developers would be willing to accept?
Let me just consult with the client on that, that question there.
Okay, fair enough.
Commissioner, can I also step in just for a moment? Is we need to also remember that whatever we want to propose at ninety-nine W um, is also going to have to be approved by ODOT. So we don't have complete control over what that looks like. Conversation. So we need to be careful about how we word the condition. Um, and right now the condition, um, that the city has written is, is the fact that, that um, applicant would go back and talk with and come up with a solution between Yamhill County and ODOT that, that meets everybody's requirements before moving forward. So just, I just wanted to make sure that we recognize that we don't have complete control over what that might look like.
Understood. So and then I guess this one's for, for you Doug. So that's something that can be addressed down the line and we could still act on the proposal as it stands tonight?
No, so you had, uh, two requests. So Mr. D. Benedetti requested that the record remain open. Um, so in that construct is record remain open for seven days for additional public testimony to be submitted. Um, at the end of that seven days, then the record would remain open for an additional seven days for the applicant to respond to the additional comments. That means we will come back to a continued hearing on June ninth at seven PM via Zoom. The second request we got was to continue the hearing. So effectively, Mr. D. Benedetti's request does continue that hearing, uh, to June ninth.
So that's, that's a de facto continuation as it stands then, okay?
So, so I think for the commissioners, probably the best explanation is that if you have questions at this point in time of the applicant or if you have questions of staff, uh, is to do so. But, uh, we will get to a point where we would need a motion to uh, leave the record open for seven days for additional public comment and seven days after that for the applicant to respond to those comments and continue the hearing to June ninth at seven PM via Zoom.
Chairman Chris Wright has a comment in chat. She says, Has a letter been received from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers determination on jurisdiction under the Clean Water Act, which may require submit talk of complete wetland delineation report?
So yes, uh, the applicant submitted a delineation report to the Department of State Lands that went through review. Uh, we've got the final determination from Division of State Lands about where the jurisdictional wetlands are at up at the northeast corner uh, of the site. And then again, in your report, there was a prior condition is that the stream corridor buffer is fifty feet or top of bank, whichever is greater from that delineated weapon. So Mr. Vice Chair, I think this is the opportunity to continue if there are any questions from commissioners of the applicant or staff.
Doug, is there any other commissioners that have any further comments or questions for staff or the speakers?
Well, then Mr. Vice Chair, then we are at the point for a motion to again, leave the record open for seven days for additional public comment. Then additional seven days after that for the applicant to respond to those comments and continue the hearing to June ninth twenty twenty-two at seven PM via Zoom.
Uh, this is Commissioner Capri. I'd like to put forth a motion to leave the record open for the seven days. And let it resume on June ninth.
May I suggest a modification to that, Commissioner, is leave the record open for an additional seven days for public comment. And additional seven days after that for the applicant to respond to the public comments.
Yes.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Faye, that's.
Sorry about that. Sorry. Uh, Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Charles, Evan?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Chris has said yes through chat.
Okay. Jeffrey Missell?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Connor Hanson?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Eden Gray?
Yes.
So the most impasses. So we have a continued hearing. So for all of those that are out there in Zoom land, you have seven, seven days from today to submit additional public testimony that can be submitted into me, or you can use the general planning email address. We will then bundle that information up and send it to the applicant. They will have seven days to provide their response to any written comments. And then we will come back on June 9th at 7:00 PM with a new staff report. So I might suggest, Mr. Chair, if we might be able to take like a five or 10 minute break.
I agree.
So for the planning commissioners and staff, uh, do not log out. Just turn off your audio and turn off your video and we will come back at uh, 9:08.
Catch your breath, Doug?
Yes, thank you.
A quick question for you before everybody comes back. Procedurally wise, you know, like point of order wise, if I, what would I do if I wanted to um, submit a question for consideration by city council? Could I do it by via resolution or or just recommendation to him?
Is it coming from you as an individual?
Yes.
Uh, you can submit that to the city recorder and it would be included in a council packet under public comments, or you could attend a council meeting and speak under public comments.
Okay, okay. I don't know if I could refer one from here or if go through there, but yeah, absolutely.
If it's coming you from you as an individual, then yes, you can go under public comment before city council. If it's something that is an issue you bring up to the planning commission to discuss and the planning commission.
No, no, just a referral. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, this is the latest we've done forever.
I apologize.
Yeah, it was your fault.
Yeah, well, yeah. Not about the last item.
All right. Let me look. I'm assuming Chris is still by phone looking at the number. Jason, you back?
I'm here.
Okay. Aiden, you're back?
I'm here too.
All right. When you, when your, your Brady Bunch rectangle lights up, then I know you're there when you speak. All right. Uh, so Mr. Vice Chair, we are now on to the next item on our agenda this evening. And this will be the, uh, this will be for legislative public hearing. So if you would like to call the public hearing to order, please.
I would like to call this legislative public hearing to order on DCA 22-000 one signs portable dash temporary with attachments. At this time, I like to call for any absentations, any biases, any ex parte contact objections to jurisdictions that anyone may have. Hearing none. Uh, after our initial staff report, there'll be time for proponents and opponents to testify and you'll be given five minutes each. So please hold comments within that time and let's go to the staff report.
Thank you. Uh, Robin, if you pull up the PowerPoint, please. All right. So I'll begin by entering the entire staff report. Exhibits and attachments into the record. So this is a legislative hearing. As the vice chair had mentioned, DCA 22-0001 on temporary importable sign modifications. Next slide. This one's much shorter than the first one, folks. So the proposal that's before you, um, and this is taken directly out of your staff report before you tonight, but is to modernize our sign code to be more closely matched the way residents desire to use signs today. This serves as a much needed update to the code. The last time we did any modifications to our sign regulations was in 2015. Secondly, is to increase the total number of flags a person can fly from one, it would increase it to two, to allow the flying of a personal flag along with what we put in the staff report, Old Glory as an example, state flag could be some other personal flag, flag of a particular nation. Third is to increase the total number of signs a person can display from one to two to a lot of wider range of purposes, like for marketing a home or for businesses, uh, supporting, you know, civic causes or events. Next slide, please. Next on that list was to remove political considerations from our sign code and allow the city to enforce the code free of any suggestions of a political bias. Design code will respect people's First Amendment rights and be based on form and quantity, not content. We cannot regulate content. Uh, next is to add a section to allow for extra flags to be flown uh, at half stat, at one and a half staff to allow the celebration of life for exceptional Americans. Next slide. So the specifics, and so I just cut snippets out of what's in your staff report. And so 15.435030B5 would be one of those changes. And so where you'll see in this, because when sometimes when you copy from Word into PowerPoint, it doesn't do the double underlines. Sometimes you'll just see a darker black line. But against the strike through is language that would be deleted, uh, underline or double underline in this PowerPoint is where new language is added. So flags would increase to two. It's except there's always a provisions in the code. It's 15535100C. Uh, under 15435090B1 and 2, uh, under 1A residential uses, you could have two portable signs. And then under two is uh, others of it's again, two is allowing two portable signs. Again, it didn't copy correctly today. Next slide. 15435100 would be striking uh, section B election events and under what would become the new C was D is that the new language is identified where it says on days when flags are normally flown at half staff. Next slide. Uh, 15435110, again, four lots in the C3 and C4 zones, uh, allowing two portable signs per street frontage where the code currently identifies one. Next slide. So the findings that are in your staff report, we did an evaluation against the statewide planning goals and determined from a staff perspective is that we are in compliance with the statewide planning goals. We also evaluated the Newburgh Comprehensive Plans, Goals and Policies. And the proposal is conformance with that. And they see in this category, again, as we started off this hearing, this is a type four procedures. It's legislative. You're only making a recommendation to the city council and your recommendation is via a resolution. Next slide. So the recommendation is to adopt resolution number 2022380, uh, which the city council adopted development code amendments and that is staff's presentation.
Hey, Steph. Next, let's open this up to public testimony and we'll begin with any proponents that would like to speak.
This case, it will be Mr. Worthy.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for still being awake at this late hour. First of all, before we hear of opponents to these measures, let me introduce myself. I'm actually your library director, currently serving in the capacity of city manager pro temp. During the last range of recall elections, city staff was subjected to a barrage of emails and phone calls, even up to and including threats to our persons concerning signs that were around the city. We were accused of bias from one side or the other and constantly harangued to in effect operate as the sign police. Staff does not desire to operate as the sign police. In fact, staff would like to focus on serious code issues such as potholes, broken tree limbs, wires and other issues that present a hazard to people's life and limb. Staff would like to support everybody's First Amendment rights to have up to two signs regularly and have those signs say whatever the person wants them to say. We would like to get out of the electoral business. And our police officers and code enforcement officers also do not want to be the sign police. We urge you to support the simplification and modernization of the code. If you walk around town, you'll see that people frequently like to support two causes or even two candidates. This is why we're suggesting that two is the right number rather than one. In summary, let's keep the city focused in its code enforcement on code matters. Potholes, cables, cracks in the pavement and broken tree limbs. And let's leave the signs to the politicians. Thank you kindly.
Well, is there any other proponents that would like to speak? Hearing none.
Not seeing any hands raised on the proponent side. And so I think we're ready, Mr. Chair, to move on to the opponent's side and undecided.
All right. Are there any opponents that would like to speak?
We have Robert Suppy promoting the panelist.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good evening. My name is Robert Suppy. I'm presuming, I am presuming that all of you read my testimony provided on Monday. So I'll not cover all of it here, though I will add some comments. To start, I think it is critical to ask yourselves exactly why the sign code is being revised at this time. With special consideration to how it may be perceived by the public. It has been clear over many years that the city wasn't putting much effort towards enforcing the sign code. I don't think that this has gone unnoticed by the public. Last year, I reported a clear violation of the sign code involving window signs. I provided pictures, careful measurements and specific numbers for the remedy. In October, I followed up to ask why the violation hadn't been corrected. I was told, and I quote, "These window signs are not anything that will get someone killed, injured or poisoned and are not detracting from anyone's quality of life or the peaceful enjoyment of their property," end quote. And that the original corrections, which failed to bring the signs into compliance, were based on a guesstimate. This was different from an earlier email where I was told the details for the correction actually came from planning. Clearly, there was not much serious effort being given to enforce the sign code appropriately. A month or two later, last November, December, there was a very conscientious recall debate in New Bay. The city then very briefly enforced some parts of the sign code based on some complaints. Is there anyone in this commission that believes that these signs met the quote, "Get someone killed, injured or poisoned," end quote standard that I was told was the reason the other violation wasn't enforced? I hope not. Since that very brief period of enforcement, it appears the city has gone back to not enforcing the sign code. As I mentioned, I counted no fewer than 16 signs that violated the C3 right of way regulations last week. This is not at all unusual in my experience. Please consider how this timeline looks to the public. The city doesn't enforce the sign code for years, refuses to enforce a complaint with very specific details and an easy remedy, then changes course and enforces it briefly when there is a contentious political event incurring, occurring, then goes back to non-enforcement. How would any reasonable person conclude that the enforcement was not politically related? Is the stated concern about quote, removing political considerations and quote, is that demanding revisions to the code itself or about enforcing it non-politically? I would argue that the existing code doesn't have a real problem with political considerations. How it was enforced is the real problem. Nothing in the recommended changes addresses this. The situation is complicated by the false or misleading information about the sign code that the city has published. As I mentioned, the city's website has a false statement regarding signs not being allowed in the right of way outside of the C3 zone, which has been incorrect for about seven years now. The city has been aware of this year error for years, but as of this morning, still hasn't corrected it. I gave examples about how the resolution before you contains misleading implications about what a flag is in the code, as well as that the existing code may have First Amendment issues with regard to election events. When the city puts out false or misleading information, how can the public be expected to understand what is correct? Next, I suggest that the present allowance allowance for additional portable signs during election events is not a serious issue here and that the recommended changes to the code would be would that would reduce the number of portable signs allowed before an election is counterproductive. What is the motivation to allow fewer signs before an election? I do think there is an issue with the definition of election event. I think the language needs to change from any public election to any scheduled public election. As we saw last year, there were weeks that fit in the 90 day window before an election, but it wasn't known at the time as the election had not been certain or scheduled. The addition of that of that single word should clean that up. Next, I ask you to consider the typical residential signs that are made of corrugated plastic with metal wires or wooden stake that poke into the ground. At present, they appear to qualify both as freestanding signs as well as portable signs and are regulated differently. I think this needs to be corrected to have a single definition applied. However, however they are designated, I'd encourage the commission to review where such signs are allowed or and are not allowed. Lastly, one of the recommended changes in this code is to allow two portable signs per street frontage downtown where only one is presently allowed. I asked the commission to carefully consider if they think allowing twice as many portable signs downtown is appropriate. I think there's enough clutter on the downtown sidewalks as it is. There were other recommendations I made in my written testimony that I'll not report here for the sake of time. I trust that the commission will give all of them thorough consideration. Thank you for consideration of these in my previous comments and I'll be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Robert?
Yes.
Any commissioners have any questions for Robert?
I potentially have a question. You mentioned the timeline is a little bit awkward. I just want to know what uh, would be a good timeline in in your opinion.
I think you either decide you're enforcing the coast for the sign code in general and not be selective about only enforcing it during a brief period of time when there's an election going on. Otherwise, you're showing that yes, you care about signs when there's an election and not otherwise. And I don't think that's perceived well by the public.
Do any other commissioners have any questions?
Well, I don't have a question other than I this Commissioner Capri and I do agree with him. That I I don't see a reason to allow twice as much signage. As already is, I I don't see any reason to allow people and businesses and to clutter up the sidewalks or the windows with additional signage. I don't I don't get it.
Alright, thank you. Is there any other opponents that would like to speak?
I am not seeing any hands being raised, Mr. Vice Chair. I do have again a series of public comments that were submitted afternoon on May ninth. So to repeat the earlier process, I will read these into the record. This is from Alex P. I value free speech. It's my first amendment right. I think most of the people complaining about the yard signs. Are on the left and they are the usual complainers. They wish to limit our freedoms. If you move to restrict the number of days and the amount of time a sign can be put in the yard. You will kill our choice to support our candidates publicly on our own property. I feel that this is very wrong for our democratic process. Therefore, please do not restrict our right to put signs in our in or during political campaigns. It's our first amendment right. You will be challenged in court. And that will cause your city useless expenditures. Paulette Alexandria Yamhill County. Next. Amber Dawson. Says city councilors, I appreciate the time that you take to do public hearings. Unfortunately, I'm not able to attend the meeting. So in lieu of that meeting, I hope that you can understand my concerns. I moved to this town many years ago and thought it was a quaint little town. Since then, personally, I've been involved in some of the political campaigns going on. Unfortunately, I have had multiple yard signs stolen off of Morton Street. I've had antennas broken off of my vehicle, rear windshield wipers broken off my vehicles. I guess my concern is that without discipline of adults acting like adults, we have to make rules. Some of those rules include sign enforcement, which I understand during COVID was not a priority. My concern with this with removing the political portion of this code. Heaven forbid, we have another recall that the divisiveness of those signs in our community should be limited. For Pete's sake, people were arrested for stealing signs and a number of signs were recovered dumped in a revine or redeem. That is ridiculously unacceptable and an assault on the first amendment. I know that bringing back common decency is probably out of your control. But having a sign enforcement is part of something that you have control over. I would respectfully ask to consider very carefully the unintended consequences of removing rules that I would hope would bring back a bit of decency. During the recall, there weren't even enough signatures collected before many signs. Were put out, which was a huge disadvantage for those who were being recalled who favored the existing rules. This is totally becoming political politically divisive and unfortunately removing rules doesn't make it better. Thanks for your consideration, Amber Dawson. Dan Carpenter. I don't think that the signage signage code needs to be dramatically changed or dropped. Political signs are divisive enough without allowing them to remain indefinitely in the public eye. Keep the current code in a fourteen day timeframe post-election to remove the political signs. Enforce it not with the compliance officer, but with issuing a fine or violations. This could easily be done with a simple online citizen complaint form, which reports the location of the sign violation and a photo optional. So a police officer can merely drive by to verify the violation and the city then mail a citation to the sign violate to the sign violation to the property owner available in public records. I can't imagine that there would be so many violations reported after the first educational wave. That this would be burdensome to the city and it would help to limit the divisiveness presently inherent with political signs. Sincerely, Dan Carpenter. James Goings. To whom it may concern, after reading most of the planning staff recommendations, appears that striking all of item B. Signs to do signs to do with election events would no longer be allowed. This is canceling freedom of speech as it applies to lawn and field signs. These actions by your city is targeting the first amendment rights of freedom of speech of the citizens of Newburgh. And this needs to go to the people for a vote. If you are going to infringe or target their first amendment rights of freedom of speech, just because a small number of partisans are complaining. Thanks, James Goings. Oh, YCRP Vice Chair. Jesse Cad. Hello, I would like to submit these public comments formally for the planning commission hearing on five twelve relating to sign rules changes. I am concerned that the changes to the rules by eliminating the section on election events could lead to categorizing election signs under other events, which has much more rigorous restrictions. Would it be possible to clarify the language to ensure that political signs in relation to elections will be permitted throughout the year? Without any limit on the number of events. Also, I agree with the police department's comments that the rules pertaining to all glory should include a comment that in that in compliance with the flag code, the US flag should be flown above all others. Thanks, Jesse Cad, resident of Newburgh. This one is final one is from Jim Talt. Planning Commission and City Councilors. I just became aware of the subject proposed amendment and and tonight's public hearing, so this letter will not be as complete as I would like. The amendment is unnecessary. The existing ordinance is quite adequate. The reason cited for the need for the new ordinance, following many complaints in November and December of twenty twenty one from residents about the positioning. Or validity of political signs, the city of Newburgh's code enforcement officer reported to the city manager pro temp. That these complaints were becoming a hindrance to normal safety related to code enforcement operations. Where is the record of actual complaints and how truly were sign complaints actually a hindrance to safety code operations? Let us see complaint metrics and real data to replace the nicely crafted wordsmithing of this proposal. Let us further evidence of similar complaints occurring during this primary election cycle. And how will creating a revised ordinance that tightens restrictions reduce complaints? It's more likely that complaints will increase with tighter restrictions. The proposed change further states the proposed development code amendments would modernize the sign code to more closely match the way residents desire to use signs today. Based on the purported complaints from the from residents about sign displays by other residents, it would seem that many hundreds of residents are already displaying signs in the way they desire and no modernization is required. Finally, it occurs to me that this proposed change is possibly in itself as politically motivated as the size it seeks to suppress before the November elections. Please include this letter in the record for public comments. Jim Talt, Newburgh. That was the final additional public comments that came in afternoon on May ninth.
Doug, um. Are there any commissioners that have anything they would like to ask staff or anything regarding the report that they would like to comment about?
Yeah, Commissioner Musall, I've got a couple of things. First, a question for the city. What is the policy on political signs in public parks? And city parks?
Oh, would you like to take that or why?
Go ahead, Will.
So really, it depends on the placement of the signs. If the if this under the current code and the code as it would also be, which doesn't address any change to that. If it's in the public right of way, we would not allow those signs to be there when we
And and thank you. I wasn't aware of that myself and I was just questioning because you know. Summer Meadow Park over here had a sign in the corner of the park for better than three weeks. Yep. And and I know it's not proper to steal signs, but I did pull it from the ground and lay it flat because it doesn't need to. It doesn't need to be in the park. I like walking my dog in my park and you know, kids and everything we don't. And as far as the signs in general, I think I'm in a lot of ways, it's it's much ado about nothing. I mean, I'm certain there are people out there that make their election decisions based on a sign, but I'm not one of them. But and then just a clarification on what's allowed current and future. And another example is between two nineteen and the airport that grass seed farming area. Then it has what at least a half a dozen signs, some of them billboard sized. Where does that come in on the regulations?
Some of those are actually on private property and
Are they? Okay.
So actually, if they're in city limits and on private property. If we were to go with the current rules, I would be obliged to send code enforcement staff to take down signs on people's private property. And the change that we're suggesting, and I'm actually just asking you really to refer this to council for their for their decision. We we really truly, there were some suggestion that I'm dishonest or dishonorable in some of these remarks. I always take offense at that. We receive barrages of phone calls. I personally got about forty or fifty phone calls. I personally had somebody call me up and say that they were going to assault me. Because we weren't pulling the signs out quick enough. This is
I'm sure that the some of the online environments are toxic these days, but
Right. So we really want to just simply, as stated, preserve everybody's first amendment rights. And get this dog out of this hunt.
I hear you. So would it be possible to basically say have what you want on your property? But keep things out of the public square like, you know, do we need more downtown and things like that? You know, the well, it's your house if you want, but you keep it out of the public square.
In all honesty, that would be the principal effect of this change would be
Okay.
Do as thou wilt on your own property. And if we find in the downtown corridor, we're seeing too many signs of a commercial nature. I promise you, my word of honor, I will go through this process again and add another adjustment to the commercials A frames.
Fair enough. Yeah.
If that is then
And if and they're on their personal property, then they're making a personal decision to if they want to leave something in their yard versus something they threw along the road. And sits out there for six months, you know.
Right. We 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 really honestly, I I promise you. We just want to have a more effective code enforcement winter. We don't want to get our phone call, our phone lines choked up, email choked up, and I don't want any more threats.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Commissioner even Commissioner Wright has some comments that she's posted in chat. I don't know if you want to look at those and read them.
Mr. Commissioner Wright states, instead of striking B at scheduled election, not having B election event. Provides no guidelines in this matter and may make things worse. Section four fifteen dot four three five dot one one zero B. In the sixth line down can permit, does this mean allow or does this state? The city can permit portable signs in the R dash zero O dash W. And can fifteen dot four three five dot one one zero C. Six, add and where, right after when on line one. Exempt off and Camellia Festival or any festival designated by the Newburgh City Council. Fifteen dot four three five dot zero zero one one zero. The add or freestanding or temporary between portable and signs, line one. Add resolute resolute highway between except as line two. The city of Wilsonville includes a map of Row and can the city of Newburgh have a link to a map that shows Row and resolute highway location for clarity? Believe that's to staff.
I think the mapping question would definitely be yours, Doug. That's more your sphere of knowledge.
Yeah, I'm just trying to look at the commissioners' comments and relate them back to the proposed code language. Mister Wright says, instead of striking B at scheduled election. So I think what she's indicating is that under fifteen four thirty five one hundred subsection B, which is stricken, is to add the word scheduled in front of election instead. Not having be election event. I'm not quite sure on that one. The event provides no guidelines in this matter may make things worse. Okay. Section four fourteen four thirty five one one O B. Sixth line down. Six. Can permit, does this mean allow? See, man, it's worse than So the full sentence that reads on a resolute highway, the city managed city manages the portion of the right of way behind the curb and can permit portable signs on the sidewalk. And so the regulations are written further into that section is that it allows portable signs on the sidewalks. And I'm summarizing here, I'm not reading the exact language, but there's a time limit of when you can have those portable signs out. And they have essentially they get taken down at night, so they're not up all night long. Then fifteen four thirty five one ten C. Add and where, right after when on line one. So for the lots in the C three and C four, the two allowed portable signs per street frontage may be located without permit in the public right of way, fronting that lot. Sept is stated in subsection B of this section, provided it meets the following standards.
So it was section six.
Section six. C six six six, the sign owner. So the language reads the sign owner must have the sign removed during hours when the business being advertised is closed. In addition, signs must not be present between the hours of two AM and five AM. So the commissioner is asking, add and where, right after when? Is it possible to do that? Yes. Exempt. Um exempt. Off, which is the old fashioned festival and Camellia. For any festival does or any festival designated by the city council. Uh, again, that's possible. That's something the commission would need to discuss. Fifteen, four, thirty-five, one, ten, D. Add or freestanding or temporary between portable and signs. D. So I'm trying to figure out indeed because D has subsections to it. If lots on the street may be allowed. Public provided ways listed subsection B. I'm not exactly following what the commissioner, what section of all the language under D she's referring to. Uh, add resolute highway between X. Between excerpt. As in line two, that could be done. City of Wilsonville includes a map of ride away. Can the city of Newburgh have a link to a map that shows ride away? And resoluted highway location for clarity. Uh, GIS could create such a map that we could post. On the sign page. I know Mr. Suppy had raised the question about a language and yes. We did receive that I'd given it to staff. It's on a list of things. To correct on the website. Uh, that he had brought up previously, so it's not been forgotten about. It's just the managing of workload to get it done. So that. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. With all due respect to the commissioner's remarks, I must say that the. The core thesis here is really as long as we have campaign based language. In a highly charged and divided time in our town's history. Staff will continue. To receive. Many remarks and many requests that are very hard for staff to have any way of dealing with. And we once again, for clarity. Would really like to be just out of this business. And focus on making the water come out the taps. Keeping the cracks filled, fixing potholes. And I will stay politically neutral as I promise you I always will.
You. Are there any other commissioners that have any further comments?
It looks like Commissioner Capri was trying to say something.
Sorry. I just don't understand the connection between. The political references. And the fact that we're just basically what you're basically wanting is. Signages to be doubled and flags to be doubled on display. Is that what I'm hearing?
Actually, these were. Free free. These were actually two separate issues. But I thought when we were going to the great lengths of modernizing the sign code. We may give people a bit more choice between having one or having two because you usually see two in every yard anyway. Um. If is the will of the commission to go back to just one. But still give us that operational advantage of not having to enforce. A political campaign issues.
Oh, I see.
That would be that would be wonderful too. I would. I would take any option that would get us out.
I'm sorry. How how then would that be stated? Because I could us. I could agree with that completely.
I I if you want to roll back two to one. But but get code enforcement and get me out of this issue of enforcing electoral business. That would be a big win for the city and its staff. And let us go on with our honest our honest work.
Okay.
Can we amend that, Doug?
So it based upon this line of discussion, if. If the commission chose to go back to one. Everywhere. Would be the starting point everywhere where it was changed from one to two, you could strike it back and just leave it as one.
Sure.
Okay.
Commissioner Musall here. Um, I I really don't see a need to for that. And I understand where Mr. Worthy is coming from and I could. I could sense the frustration he said in dealing with this. Happy to do what we can here. But yeah, I I I don't see the big difference of one versus two. As long as you know, it's on the personal property, we try to stay out of the public areas as much as we can. And you know, then you're not. Likely to subject, you know, like a frivolous lawsuit if we try to go down, keep it too much, but. Yeah, I'm I'm definitely in favor. Of doing this of, like I say, removing him from the. Um, political sign police. Yeah, that's not in your contract. You didn't sign up for that.
Actually, I actually don't have a contract yet. I'm only the pro team and I'm. I'm still on the librarian salary. I'm still a librarian.
But but yeah, so, uh, yeah, you know, that that that's my two cents that. Whatever the commission decides, I'm in favor either way, no one, the one or the two, but yeah, just making it where the political language has struck out.
Doug, could we have a show of hands for one versus two, just to simplify that decision?
I think you could. It's not an official vote, but you could have a raising of the hands. Do you know where it's been changed from one to two? Do you? View that as something that's generally acceptable. It'll be captured in your in motion, whatever direction you go. So I'm seeing.
I don't know how to raise my hand.
Well. You can do it on screen.
I don't see how. Oh, I can do it like this.
Yeah.
Just hold that hand up.
There you go. I blacked out.
I'm seeing one, two, three, four, five. Sharon.
What am I voting for? One or two?
Do you? Do you want to keep it at one?
Yes.
So I'm seeing one, two, three, four, five, six. Seven saying. Keep it at one. Okay, you can put your hands down now or remove your electronic hand. So that gives you some guidance about which direction the commission is thinking.
And the city is still thankful.
So with that, it would take a modification. If that's somebody makes a motion. It would be to approve. Resolution twenty twenty-two, three, eighty. With the revision to change all of the references of two back to one.
One quick question on that, if I might. No, would that would that have a damper effect on any? Home based businesses looking to do a little advertising or anything like that, or say for like a. A public nonpolitical cause or something.
I I am. I don't think so. Given that we only have one FTE of code enforcement. It would be unlikely that we would get to come down hard on home businesses. So I think it would still be okay.
Yeah, so so in light of that, you know, it might be better to go with the two. Just to give a little bit more leeway. Where you're not getting, you're not getting calls, so. No, Sam down the road put up a second sign, you know. So so I'm I'm kind of inclined to go with the two. I think I I I raised my hand, but I thought I was voting the other way.
When I raised my hand, I actually thought I was voting for two.
Well, we can go back and do this exercise one more time to make it.
It's already coming up on ten o'clock. What the heck?
So. Does the commission members, would you like to see the language read only one sign?
No.
So I'm hearing. One. No. I've only heard one. No. So again, if you want that, raise your hand.
I think Jason has his hand up too. Oh.
Sharon, is your hand raised for only?
My hand is raised for one.
Okay, that's Aiden, Jason and Sharon.
Yep.
Are raised. This is exciting.
All right. So that gives you a flavor again of the members. Um, about what you think. So you. I think, Mr. Mr. Chair, we are at that point where you need to close the public testimony portion.
I would like to close the public testimony and move to Commissioner deliberation.
Yes.
Commissioner deliberation. Are there any commissioners that they would like to ask staff regarding reports or comments about?
So you are at that at that junction. If you don't have any more deliberations, Mr. Chair, then there's the opportunity for somebody to propose a motion.
Would any commissioners like to offer a motion?
I would like to make the motion that we. Uh, I'm sorry, Doug. I just I didn't write down the way you said it. To go back to one. With the revision. And then I'd also I liked the idea that we take away the political. Side of it. Sorry, I don't. I don't know exactly how to make that motion.
I think what you're saying is. And correct me if I'm not tracking. Is that it's a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash three eighty. With the revision that it refers to only one. One sign.
Right. That's what I'd like to.
I second that motion.
And we have a second. Can we get a roll call though?
All right. Um, Sharon, Jeffrey.
Yes.
Charles Evan.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
See what we got.
She says no.
No.
Uh, Jeffrey Missal.
No.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Connor Hanson.
Uh, no.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yes.
Aiden Gray.
Yes.
So that motion passes five to three. So that would mean that that the proposal that would be forwarded to the city council for consideration staff would change. Everywhere where it says two, where it had been changed to two, it will revert back to one.
This is this is very, very acceptable and thank you so much. I'm gonna be able to hang out with my wife in November and December at least a little bit.
Congratulations.
Can I ask a question? Where where is Mr. Worthy from? Are you Glaswegian?
Yes, sir. I'm from the. I'm from Dumbartonshire, which is a smaller county near Glasgow. And I'm from the county seat, which is called Dumbarton, which unfortunately has grown to the size of Newburgh now.
I'm good. I'm going to do something really unfair. Can you say burglar alarm?
But shall I do it the way I did when I first arrived here?
Yes.
Burglar alarm.
Thank you very much. That's an old Top Gear joke.
I know. I love Top Gear.
I agree.
Thanks, folks.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, we're to the point on the agenda for new business and staff has no new business. We have no workshop. Uh, you have your forward calendar for upcoming planning commission activities. Uh, I do need to remind you and I will keep reminding you. You'll get another reminder. On June ninth, you have an extra meeting in June on the twenty-first with the city council on a Monday evening. Uh, so make sure you have that on your calendars. Uh, that will be at six PM. We will keep communications coming at you both verbally at your next meeting and then through emails. Um, I will not be there the evening of the twenty-first. Somebody has graciously let me get out of town. And so the next item is there's any any items from commissioners.
I'm out of ideas this month. Sorry, guys.
All right, then, Mr. Chair, you're to the point where you can do those magic words. This meeting is adjourned.
This meeting of May twelfth, twenty twenty-two of the Newburg Plan Commission will have been adjourned. I hope you all have a great evening and I'll see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.